Meeting, our work study meeting of Independent School District 624 with the first.
Chapman?
Here.
Fahey here, Tim.
Here.
Mullin?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Anderson, Berg and New Master are absent.
Our first agenda item this evening will be the health insurance rates effective January 1, 2018. Mr. Wolf?
Good evening. We're approaching the enrollment period for benefits for employees in November, and at this time, our self-insured health insurance program renews our usage for the year and our benefit rates and makes recommendations for rate changes for the 2018, for 2018. With us tonight is Piri Guilfoyle from National Insurance Services, and this can be fairly complicated information, but he explains it about as clear as any human being can explain it. And one thing I know for sure is that he welcomes questions, so if, as you have questions, be sure to just interrupt them, and he will gladly answer any questions you have. Piri Guilfoyle.
Thank you very much. So, what you have in front of you hopefully is the presentation. Now, this presentation took, probably just took 50 minutes with the insurance committee. How much time do I have here?
I believe that you give a lot of, about an hour to answer questions and get through the whole thing, so.
Perfect. Look at that. It's like a dry run. So, within the packet, on page one, we have an overview of what we discussed, and primarily it is current market conditions, the medical renewal, the medical renewal documents and explanation, corresponding claim displays, a benefit display, a rate display, and then the dental renewal. So, the dental plan is also self-funded, so we go through both renewals together. Before I dive into the medical renewal, are there any pressing questions, concerns that anyone would like to address right now?
Doesn't look like so.
All right. So, on page two, we have our market conditions. This is a pretty generic slide that we include for most of our groups, is rising healthcare costs a national trend, some explanations as to why this is occurring. Obviously, we have an aging population. We had some discussion on whether or not this group is an aging group, and it is not, outside of the norm, so if that was a concern, take that one off.
Do you mean the school board, or the?
We do have increased utilization, and that does bear out in the claims, so we do have, we're gonna dive into it, the claims numbers are gonna be pretty similar from year over year, but our actual utilization from 2017 compared to 2016 was higher. We have more people going to the doctor. So, that is gonna cause an increase at some level. However, those people are accessing what we would call office visit care and not hospital care, so that's a good thing. So, we do have some increased utilization, but it is where we want it to be. We'd rather have people going to the doctor than to the hospital. We do have an increase in prescription drug costs. This is a pretty market-wide trend. There's almost no price control that we, as a group, as a self-insured entity, can implement to affect the increase of prescription medications. Prescription drug companies set their own prices with complete monopolization of the market, so we are just subject to what they charge us in terms of brand name medications. We also have some new medical technology, that's always gonna be the case, and then we have a volatile political environment. Now, one of the side factors of a volatile political environment is that providers are trying to negotiate the highest reimbursement rate they possibly can with the claims administrators, 'cause they don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow. We saw this recently with children's and Blue Cross. Children's Hospital is driving to a number that they want to obtain to be comfortable in an unknown environment. Blue Cross obviously pushed back against them. We're gonna see more and more providers do that process. We're gonna have to keep an eye on how it affects us as a self-insured entity, where we're paying our own claims. We're gonna have to make sure that Health Partners is getting us the best discount, or yours in the future, whomever we choose as our claims administrator. Yes, sir?
On the decrease in the discounts offered by clinics and hospitals, individual providers, from what I've seen as well, you know, because they'll say this is the stated charge, but here's what it was settled for, when you see the explanation of the benefits, are you saying those are being reduced, where they, you know, the clinic, the hospital, the individual provider just won't accept anything less than what they billed?
Right, so these providers have, have set fee schedules, so procedure X costs Y as negotiated with Health Partners. When they renew their contract with Health Partners, they want Y to be more, and they're driving towards Y being more, whereas probably in years past, where providers were charging, I don't wanna say they were charging the same across all providers, but the impetus was on getting patients. Now, the impetus seems to be on getting as much money for the procedure cost as if they already have the patients. That's a dynamic shift that we would have to account for if it happens to all the providers.
I have a question, how widespread is that, and do you have room to maneuver to different providers if, you know, Provider A refuses to give discounts, whereas Provider C will?
Right, so like, what arrows in our quiver do we have to mitigate that kind of cost projection? And one thing is, if, if Blue Cross is doing a better job than Health Partners at driving these providers down, we evaluate Blue Cross. We can evaluate looking at layered networks that steer patients or members to more cost-effective That's a pretty big trend in the marketplace, is to look at, you know, if we identify, we could go out and identify Health East as a good partner, negotiate a network allowance just with them, provide better benefits for them than going somewhere else, and then steer people there. Now, that's a pretty extreme example, but that is one of the things we can do. Right.
Any other questions so far? I have one. So, you talked about the aging population, so, of participants, do you have an average age of all participants in the plan?
I do not know the average age off the top of my head, but I can find out.
So, and that was the determining factor of figuring out how the population's aging?
So, what we do is, we, we, for each of our groups, we have what's called an age risk score, and we put the census data through a population database, and it gives us a score compared to the mean. So, if a group is even, or within a couple points, we would call that even, and if a group is higher, we would increase the claims accordingly. Or, if the group was lower, we could decrease the claims projection accordingly. White Bear comes out even. So, I don't know what the average age is, I just know that the score came out appropriate to the mean.
Somewhat related to that, and I'm sure you do this, but do you track the usage, in other words, the number of claims, and factor that into the premiums?
We do, and we track it, like, by retirees and so forth, and then the district does its own tracking of early retiree costs that are affecting the plan and things like that, and we use that data as well.
So, and then under prescription drug, are we, is there any policy set in place to use generics, or is that, are we just getting?
Is everyone just going on getting brand names? It's a good question. So, right now with Health Partners, we have 90% generic utilization. Market right now is about 86%, so we're 4% above the market in our generic utilization. In Minnesota, there is a requirement that generics be filled even if a brand name is prescribed, so there is a mandatory fill of generic unless explicitly denoted otherwise by the physician. Health Partners does do a good job of managing that pharmacy aspect of making sure everyone's on generics, so we do have a pretty high generic utilization. Yes?
Are there caps to the benefits for our district employees?
Caps as in?
Either claims within a year, or a single large claim?
So, within the benefit set, there's no cap on a benefit allowed to an employee. So, if a benefit, you know, if an employee has a million dollar claim, the entire claim would be covered. We do have policies on the backside that protect the district against those million dollar claims, but there's no limit on a benefit available to an employee except for very specific benefits, like infertility, things like that.
George?
Going back to the prescription drugs or generics, rising also proportionately to the name brand, or the fact that 90% of the prescriptions are generic make the bullet increase in prescription drug costs not as big a factor as maybe some otherwise?
That's a good question. So, on page 14, so we're jumping around a little bit, we have a pharmacy trend display that will show what the average cost for generic medications are, what they were last year, what they are today, and then an average cost for brand name medications, what they are today and what they were yes, or for last year. And if, so, there's a lot of numbers on this page, so I apologize for that. But, we have an average generic ingredient cost of, last year, $26.38, does everyone see that, about halfway down in the middle? Right next to that is what it is for the current year, $25.38. Right below that is the brand name model. $5.23 for last year, $6.28.65 this year. So, is the generic price following the brand name market trend of increasing? No. The generic market is highly competitive for manufacturers of prescriptions. The costs are almost always depressed at some level, where we don't see a hundred dollar jump from one year to the next, like we do in the brand name cost. If, if Bayer decides to make a generic cost $10 more, Pfizer's just gonna come in and make it $1 less and then control the market. So, in the generic world, we have depressants out there called the market that keeps the price low, whereas in the brand name world, where these pharmaceutical companies don't have any competition on their medication because they have a patent lock for a certain amount of years, they can charge whatever they want, and they can change it from Tuesday to Wednesday, and there's not much we can do about it, other than try and get people to use generic medications. All right, so, page three is where we get into the medical renewal, and everyone should have this page showing. I'm gonna pass this page around, see if I got enough. It's easier to have this page loose, because the next five slides or five pages are gonna be walking through what each number on this page is, if that makes a little bit of sense. So, it should be the same thing, at least I hope it is. So, hopefully, we have enough, almost. Oh, Hugh already got one. All right, so if we look at page five, the top of page five is the claims history for the last four years. We did receive a request from the insurance committee to display this four-year history with both the claims expenses as shown, the actual premium revenues, and then also the increases. So, this slide will change with more information, but it gives a little snapshot of how the plan is operated over the last four years. Now, once we dig in to the bottom of page five, we're gonna look at the renewal analysis. So, what we have on this loose leaf page is a claim history for two years, and this is how we develop the cost or the revenue structure that needs to be projected for 2018 experience. So, what we do is, we take two 12-month periods from September of 17, and then from September of 2016. So, we have two, or two 12-month periods, and we have a model that blends those two 12 months together and then projects them as if they were to have occurred at the end of 2018. And that's how we come up with a claims projection that needs to be covered by the premium revenue we're gonna charge to the employees and to the district. Does that make sense? It's all a model to see how much the claims are gonna cost for next year. So, we start with period one claims and period two claims of $12.4 million and $12.5 million. We take out our stop-loss protection, so that's that backside protection. The district does purchase stop-loss from Health Partners that protects us from any individual high claimants. So, if we have a million dollar high claimant, the district's only on the hook for $165,000, we don't wanna count all million dollars in the claims projection. We wanna account for what actually occurred as expenses to the plan. Does that make sense? So, we take out that, those stop-loss figures which are indicated in peach there, the 135 and the 765, and the resulting numbers are 12.3 million and 11.7 million. So, what we then do is, we take each of those numbers and multiply them by trend. Make sure I'm not skipping pages here. So, we multiply them by trend, 5.3 for period one, 9.75 for period two, and we come up with $12.9 million and $12.9 million. Everyone still tracking with me? So, then we apply our rebates. So, we do get a pharmacy rebate from Health Partners that we negotiated as part of the 2017 renewal, which means that the funds or the monies that are paid to Health Partners by drug manufacturers for Health Partners covering their medications gets passed through to us. We also have a secondary rebate based on Health Partners' total cost of care contracts that they have with their providers, which means that if providers don't hit certain targets, they have to refund us money. So, if they are not as efficient as their Health Partners contract dictates, they have to refund the group X amount of money, depending on which efficiencies they missed. So, for 2016, we have $266,000 coming back to the group, or 2017, for 2016, we have $116,000. We wanna take those off of the claims values, so then we have renewal claims of 12.699 and 12.81. Everyone still tracking with me? All right. So, then what we do is, we identify the member months, so this is the number of members in each month of the 12-month period added together, so 27.685 for 2017, 28.224 for 2016. We divide the renewal claims figure by that member month category and come up with a per-member-per-month rate. It's pretty exciting. So, this is what we would call the belly button rate. A lot of times, we think of health insurance in terms of our contracts, single cost, family cost. This is actually prescribing a rate for each person on the plan. So, each belly button costs the district $458.72 for 2017, projected forward, and $453.87 for 2016. Does that make sense to everyone still? So, then we have a weighting formula. So, ideally, we wanna take the two years of claims data and meld them together to project for the next year. So, we weight them, 70% for 2017, 30% for 2016, and we multiply that PM/PM rate by that percentage.
Why did you select 70/30 rather than like 50/50?
That's a great question. So, 70/30 is what NIS uses as their standard formula, given that the claims are through September. It is, and I wanna make this clear, an arbitrary number that we set, so this is what our formula dictates. Other people could use 50/50, other people use 80/20. So, our model is prescribed to be at 70/30 when we have nine months of data. So, there's no rhyme or reason to it that I can explain, other than the fact that that's how we do it.
So, you annualized the 2017 column?
Right.
So, it's nine months of data, but you've converted that to.
Well, it's 12 months of data, but we're only nine months through the year. So, we're through September, so we have to count for October, November, December.
You need September to September, and September to September.
And then we have, right, correct. And then we have to account for January through December of 2018, and this is where insurance gets very confusing. So, we have, we're projecting 12 months, we're trying to figure out what 12 months cost's gonna be for 2018, but we only know what costs are through September of 2017. So, we're missing three months of data. So, some way, somehow, we have to make sure we're accounting for those three months, and we do that with a trend factor, 5.3, 9.75 for period two, and then we also do it with the weighting formula. So, in theory, if we were to have through October, the formula would be 80/20, 'cause the data would be more accurate. Does that make? Trust me, it's, this, that weight is, is where things can change, where things can be manipulated. So, we really do have to rely, me personally, have to rely on the formulas given to me by NIS. So, it's just what we use.
It's not just random, it's.
It's not random.
It's not on.
Right. So, and I shouldn't be so deferent to that number. I mean, we have people that look at what it should be, and then they tell Piri what to use. So, they look at different programs and different analyses, and then give it to me, and that's what I plug in there. So, we end up with weighted claims of 321 and 136.16. I'll get to the manual factor in a second. Those two numbers added together, so I probably, I'm still checking, on the bottom of page six now, actually, the top of page seven. So, we take the 321 and 136, have a cumulative total of 457.27. That is, those two numbers blended together, and because it's a belly button number, it's a per-member-per-month number, we multiply that number times the current members on the plan. So, we multiply 457.27 times 23.46 and come up with a monthly claims amount of $1,072,000. Everyone see that? Still tracking with me, just going down the sheet? So, that $1,000,000 multiplied by 12 gives us $12.872 million. That number is the whole reason we do that exercise from above, is to arrive at that 12.8 number. That is what the model tells us, what these two claim periods blended together would cost the group in 2018. Yes, sir?
Is there a slight misprint on the 2016 data between page seven and the individual sheet that you handed out?
Yes, there is. I believe the 9.75 and the 10.1?
No, I was actually looking at the 136.16 on the loose sheet for 2016, and it's represented as, oh, that one's the same, 136.16, and then, 3, yeah, 17's the misprint, 317.90 versus 321.11.
That is a misprint. That's the second one we have to correct, so I apologize for that. When we do the updated sheet that was requested from the insurance committee, we can update that sheet as well.
The 457.27, that is accurate.
Right.
Okay.
So, we also have what's called the manual factor. So, this is a factor that's applied when there are programs in place by the district or by the employer that will help mitigate claims costs. We currently have a program, Grand Rounds, that is meant to mitigate claims costs. They've guaranteed an amount of savings. They've guaranteed, I think, 3%, but they put 1% at risk, so we have a claims factor of 99%. So, we multiply that 12.8 times 99, and we come up with the projected annual claims, which is the third amount from the bottom, the first amount above the yellow box, and we come up with $12.7 million. That is the number that our revenue has to cover to pay for claims. So, when we're setting premium values and premium equivalents, we have to make sure that we have that target that we know we have to cover. Now, when we were talking about an aging population, if we had a health risk score that was higher than the mean, we would adjust that .99 up. So, we do have another school district that has a health risk score of 1.06, we multiply their claims by 6% to account for their aging population. So, it is, it is in that manual factor arena where we enter things or items outside of claims experience that we know will affect claims experience. Does that make sense? So, we, our annual fixed charges of $2.86 million are added to the 12.74, and we have a total calculated need of $14.8 million. Compare that to the 13.9, and it ends up being a 6%, 6.6% increase. Yes, sir?
Kim?
Couple of questions. With respect to the annual fixed charges, that's, that's the various fees, I assume that we're getting billed by Health Partners, by you folks.
Grand Rounds. So, the annual fixed charges, we have stop-loss fees, aggregate insurance fees, claims administrator fees from Health Partners, a fiduciary fee, NIS fee, any associated taxes, and grand rounds. Our standard formula is, we would want that number to be at around 14%, it's at 16%.
I have a question. Going back to the trend, that is the market index trend?
So, that is the trend, not market, that is the trend associated specifically to White Bear.
Just White Bear.
Right. So, the market trends are actually about, so, small group rating tables, and this is kinda insurance wonky, they kinda set the trends, or define the trends when they're released, and right now, trend's about 9%. So, when you were, if you were to compound out a 9% trend that's available in the market by 15 months, our actual trend in that scenario would be 13, or 12. Being able to use our own data, we can more accurately assess the trend that's affecting us. We're not subject to the market in that arena. We know what our claims costs are, specifically 'cause we see them.
Your current income is primarily driven, you mentioned the other factors in there, but primarily driven by the member months?
The current income is just based on the number of single contracts and family contracts and the premium assigned to each of those contracts. That's how we come up with that income.
The basic figure for the current income?
Yep.
Anybody else?
Sorry, go ahead, Ellen.
You know, last year, we were introduced to the grand rounds. Do we have any data on the effectiveness of that in reducing the claims?
So, right now, it's a great question. So, she asked. So she asked, how effective is grand rounds? And I can say, right now, I don't think it's being very effective at all. I think we have twenty-six people utilizing the plan. We would like to see more people utilizing the plan. If one of those people changes their cost structure or changes their path, it will make up for the cost of the plan. So, but ideally, we would like to see the, the target utilization from grand rounds that they have is three percent. And right now, we're at one. So we are working with grand rounds to try and get out some sort of message campaign, more than what we've already done, to try and drive utilization.
So when you talked about fees earlier, is there a current, is there a list of the fees that currently the plan is paying inside of this book?
Not inside the book, but we can definitely provide it.
I'd like to see it, please.
Sure.
Any other questions before, all right, move on.
All right, so the next handful of pages are claims, are the claims displays that tie back to the reports. So the twelve point four four nine and the twelve point five four three are what was used for the renewal calculation. So I'm not going to go through all of those. On page, unless someone would like me to. On page twelve is what we have, uh, called the medical cost savings detail. I'm not going to talk too in-depth about this, but this is something that we monitor quite closely because it shows what kind of discounts we're getting from health partners. So we pay health partners to administer our claims. We want to make sure that we are getting or maximizing the discount that's available in the network. So their provider discount savings are twelve million dollars from a total bill charge of twenty-six. That's a pretty good discount. Not fifty percent, forty-one percent, thirty-nine percent. But we track those for each of the carriers. So if we identify, if Blue Cross is, you know, doing a better job than health partners in this arena, then we would start looking at Blue Cross as a possible alternative to administer our claims. Does that make sense? So this is one of the things that we continue to monitor to make sure health partners is doing their job. So we already talked about the pharmacy trend report. I do have a claim amount by month, that's just a display. On page seventeen, we have a rate display, and of course, these are tentative rates. So, but this is our first side-by-side comparison of what the costs are in two thousand and seventeen and what they will be in two thousand and eighteen. I'm not going to go through every number on the page, but how the page operates, and this is a page that White Bear's HR department has put together, so it's fairly effective at communicating the cost of the plans, is it denotes the total cost, the total premium of the plan, the employer cost, so what the district's contributing, what the employee cost is, and then applies what the cost of the plan could be. So an employee can look at this and see, well, if I don't use the plan at all, it's going to cost me this much throughout the year. If I use it to its most available extent, it's going to cost me this much in a year. So it identifies best-case scenario, worst-case scenario. And this is a sheet that is given to the employees during open enrollment. So the side-by-side comparison that's used. Any questions at all on the rate displays? Okay, page nineteen is the benefit display. There are no changes to the benefits. So same plans that have been offered for the last six years, five years. And then the last hand, or last two pages is the dental renewal. So the dental costs for two thousand and sixteen were nine hundred and five thousand dollars, projected to be nine hun, or they were nine hundred and five thousand dollars. The projected cost for two thousand and seventeen, nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. With all costs accounted for, administration plus claims, the revenue will exceed the cost by an estimated hundred thousand dollars. We would call this a pass for the second year in a row for the dental plan, so zero, zero. We do have an aggregate policy wrapped around our dental plan. What I mean by that is we do have an insurance policy that we purchased that the entire dental plan expense can't exceed a little over a million dollars. So we have already identified our worst case of what the dental plan can cost us, and we have funded beyond that. So even if everyone were to maximize the cost of the dental plan, the dental plan would still be ahead at the end of the year. That's why we give it a zero. It's primarily because of that aggregate policy. Now, in two years, we won't have that aggregate policy, and we'll have to start monitoring the dental plan a little more closely and not using that aggregate policy as our max. But as long as we have that aggregate policy there, it's something we pay for, we should use it. Fund up to the max, and then just be done. Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Why won't we have the aggregate policy in two years?
So health partners is who's selling us the aggregate policy right now? I don't think that they will do it again. They don't offer it to too many groups, and I haven't seen them offer it to another group since we've got it. And the other carriers in the marketplace don't do it. They're actually not filed to do it. So health partners is the only dental insurer that can offer the aggregate policy, and since it seems to be that they're stopping, I don't think we'll be able to access that benefit any longer. And I think only three groups in the state have it. So on the very, very last page is just the dental claims by each month. And the important thing here is that there's largely some consistency with the dental financing and the dental costs on a month-in, month-out basis. And that is the end of the report.
So with that, open it up, questions? And I believe this will be on the agenda for the November meeting. Thank you very much for coming in, we really appreciate the update. With that, we'll turn to item B two, which is the, um, the secondary after-action review and secondary class, uh, course proposal. Ms. Paul.
To give you a preview of what the conversation's going to be like tonight. Um, first of all, we have Jill Pearson with us, who is an exceptional leader on our teaching learning team, and she really has done the heavy lifting of the coordinating work tonight to bring these course proposals and the after-action review to you. Um, and we have two new faces. Um, this is Jeremy Kurg, and he's one of our career navigators. He's specifically working on construction and manufacturing. However, they work as such a close team that they really strengthen each other's thinking across all of our pathway work. But I'm just excited for you to get to hear them talk tonight in terms of their work in the course proposals. And then we have Jenny Moore, and she's working primarily with IT and healthcare pathways. Um, just great additions to the district, I'm excited to hear from them. And then Don Bosch is representing the secondary administrators, and he's just been a critical thinker in the conversations that we've been having through, that have led to the courses that you're going to be looking at. Um, not sitting with us, but key to the team is Tim Wald. Um, his perspective is always appreciated, and he's been a key part of the work. So even though he's not up here, he may end up chiming in as, as he sees fit. But just been a great, great to have him as part of the district team. Main things that we're going to be covering tonight, first of all, you'll notice, connected to the presentation you heard last, at the last month's board session, um, this presentation is grounded in our World's Best Workforce Plan, and so you'll see some connections to what we've talked about at the last board meeting. And it's just foundational to the work that we're going to be talking about in terms of all students being college and career-ready. Secondly, an after-action report for seventeen, eighteen courses. Um, it's just a critical part to our continuous improvement process, and the information in here reflects leading indicators because we're just in the fall, early on in the implementation of these new courses, so want to have that frame in mind. But it's just a really important thing to be monitoring the outcomes that we're getting of those leading indicators. And then the key part of our presentation has to do with our course proposals. Um, we, we would like you to watch for two things. A continued emphasis on providing students opportunities for concurrent enrollment courses, meaning students take courses that they can get high school credit and college credit. Ten courses have the potential to be concurrent enrollment, which is a significant offering for us as a district. Secondly, a continued expansion of our career pathway opportunities, and ask for you to look for the intentionality behind the courses that we're going to be having you listen to and to get your input on. We just also want to keep in mind, this is our draft that we are preparing to bring to you in the November board meeting, action on these proposals. So it's just really critical for us that we get your input, your feedback, your questions, because it helps us continue to move these from draft to final in preparation for that board meeting.
Ms. Paul, just because I'm new at sitting in this seat, so I just want to make sure that as we're going through this and as board members have questions, right, we can just, you don't have a problem with interrupting in the middle, right?
No, no, we will talk, that we will direct our attention through you as the sitting chair for the evening, and we'll make sure that we're honoring that process. Um, but we definitely are open to your questions whenever they arise.
Perfect, all right, let's move.
Great, thank you for having us. This is always an exciting time of year, as we're getting started in the school year and already starting to look ahead to next year as well. As Ms. Paul referenced, a large part of our thinking and designing is really centered in our World's Best Workforce milestone of preparing all of our students to be college and career-ready by graduation. So I hope that you see that as really apparent, and each of these proposals for next year is also as we look at what has been implemented for this year. Some of you have attended our World's Best Workforce meetings, and I know you are well aware of what we strive toward. Um, in addition to that big milestone, we're looking at the standards that our Minnesota Department of Education provides for us, so their college and career readiness standards, seeing how we can implement those even better in the district. We're looking and listening to employers to hear what trends are occurring, especially in our local community, as we have such strong partners telling us what they need from our graduates. We're looking and hearing perspectives from not only potential employers, but also post-secondary institutions, hearing from our current students, but we also really enjoy hearing from the former students when they come back and share ways that they felt really prepared or less prepared for college and career. And we're also really focusing on closing that opportunity gap that we have heard so much about in our district is really central to our work. So giving opportunities for all of our students, looking and following data on how many students are accessing these opportunities and thinking about ways that we can do better to improve that. In thinking about this goal, we know that we can't design without full intentionality, so we really need to be mindful of how we design for this bridge from high school to college and careers. So this visual is just meant to represent that there are some critical elements are trying to include in each of these new courses and as we redesign courses. So we need opportunities for kids to explore. So you'll see things that are designed for North Campus students. Um, and we're, we also are thinking of middle school, but the course proposals this evening are largely high school. The career coursework, very clearly, you're going to see where those courses fall in line with our four pathway areas, field experiences, opportunities for kids to get out and experience these different industries, but also to connect with people who work in them, maybe in the classroom or through, we even have some e-mentoring. Um, getting kids college credits. We know if we can get students twelve college credits by the time they graduate, their chances of completing a degree are much higher when they get to college. Getting them opportunities for credentials, so they have something on their resume, they have something attractive to employers, they can start with a living wage that is important for our families in the community, that gets us to career-ready. Um, so just briefly, I'd like to turn it over to Jenny and Jeremy, and they could highlight some work, some of those elements that they're seeing in the pathway areas that they support.
Yeah, I mean, I can walk you right through this scenario in regards to our manufacturing program. Uh, one of the, and speaking of which, one of the nice things about coming in now, uh, the manufacturing program kind of got kick-started a year, or a year or two before I got here. Mr. Wald is pretty integral on that work, and, um, Mr. Nyreen in the classroom. But as we look to utilize that pathway as an opportunity to grow our other pathways as far as using that framework, if we put it up against this, um, bridge to accelerate students' journey from high school to college and career-ready, um, we have exploration tools in place, and particularly with our industry partners, uh, they provide the opportunity for us to go visit their sites and come to our site as far as, um, working with our students. We also have a four-course sequence, which is, um, uh, manufacturing and applied engineering, one and two, and precision machining, one and two. So we have a four-course sequence. We also have field experience in manufacturing through a program that we partner with Vatness Heights Economic Development in our Generation Z program. You may have heard some of that in the local media. Um, that is something that was put into place before I got here, but something to look to continue and to not only continue but grow. College credits, we have opportunities through Project Lead the Way and through some enrollment courses with Century College and possibly partnering even further with St. Paul College. And, um, so we do have that in line, and credentials right now, in the last couple of weeks, myself and Mr. Nyreen have been working on finalizing what it would take in order to get him both as certified as he needs to be and to make sure that our students are getting that NIMS credential when they finish this four, or at least have the opportunity to have those NIMS credentials when they leave high school. And so that's been a, a very good piece that was already started and in place that we've been able to model our other career pathways off from. As today, I spent half the day in MC three training, looking at tomorrow, going back to MC three training, and providing those credentials to our students in our construction pathway. Well, in constr...
That's all right, we'll just, we'll go to construction with the course proposals. And on to Jenny?
So for information technology, then, we have a lot of different opportunities, but within the school district right now, we have Tech Depot, and that's kind of an exploration opportunity, as well as with a summer paid job within, from middle school all the way up to South Campus. And then we have some coursework right now, we have an IT explorations class, which students can get concurrent enrollment for. There are programming, an AP computer science principles class, and a web design class as well. And then field experiences, we're currently working with businesses from Red Team Security. They're going to be doing some cybersecurity hands-on experiences, actually, November fifteenth, which I'm really excited about. And we have opportunities like Girls Who Code, Microsoft, we are involved in with Junior Achievement, so the list is on and on, Minnesota IT Center of Excellence. In fact, Minnesota IT Center of Excellence, right now, for the field experiences, um, we are, we have three young ladies who applied for an award for the first time in our district. No one else has applied, it's a statewide, um, award, so we just had three girls finish that. And then credentials were not, we don't have anything yet, but we are looking into CompTIA A-plus certification or Microsoft Office Specialist, we're looking into that. So that's IT.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that, so you can see, yep, we have a question right here.
Heather?
Jeremy.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Uh, Scott Wilson.
Yeah.
Last year, we had a bit of an issue with equal access to some of the technology to the welding machines, I don't expect you to understand the history behind that.
Okay.
But I'll ask you, from where you're sitting or standing, does it strike you that all of our students have equal access to the technology for vocational accreditation, and specifically concerned about our ALC students having access to the machines that they need to work on their accreditation?
Um, we, we also had an opportunity with Ms. Ruane, came with today to MC three training. Um, as far as access to our lab, as far as I know, to this point, yes. As far as access to our lab, as far as I know to this point, yes. But, at the same time too, there is logistical barriers that could get in the way, being that the ALC is in a different building. But it is something worth looking into. I can't answer that directly at this time.
I can follow up with you with a written response to that. We've done some key things to improve on that with the middle college model with Century College and just a better delivery across all three campuses. So, I can provide that to the board.
For equal opportunity.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, going back to the computer area, you said that you're looking into maybe A-plus or Microsoft Office. What's the factors there? I mean, seems like it'd be great to get those, so what are we waiting for? What's the-
Logistical things as well. So, most A-plus certification classes are self-guided, so most people take about six months to do it. So, we have to make sure that our students have that perseverance, willing to fail and try over and over. Equipment, we need a lot of hardware and software. So, just stuff. So, we have the idea it's possible, it's thinking about how do we offer that to our students? Is it threading that into a current class? Is it creating a new class? So, it's a lot of, it's a lot of questions that we need to answer.
And definitely engaging with other staff, like an idea some of us have brainstormed is using the Tech Depot, but we'd really need to engage the staff who lead that to make sure that they see that as a viable option. You'll hear-
The MOS isn't, doesn't seem like the logistical difficulties of the A-plus, right?
You're right. And with MOS, with that, it's more geared towards becoming an administrative assistant. So, when doing the research, talking with employers and post-secondary institutions, they're like, well, that's not really IT. It's been really valuable talking with those different people in the community and seeing what's most valuable. Right now, A-plus in the employer's eyes are the most valuable.
Thank you for your questions. Additionally, in the both after-action report and the new course proposals and realignment proposals, you'll see and hear a lot related to those college credit opportunities expanding for our students. We already have a robust offering and this would make it even more expansive. So, you've probably heard of advanced placement, we have many offerings already for our students and the ones that we've moved forward with in the last two years have specifically been ones that we've sought out because they are meant to be accessible to students, not a lot of prerequisites, if any beyond the general grade level courses for those. Jeremy referenced Project Lead the Way, which really intersects with a couple of our career pathway areas. And then, concurrent enrollment, that opportunity for students to get college credits while they attend our North and South Campus and even ALC with our middle college opportunities. We have CIS you've probably heard of, it's a little kind of a trademark term that's used mostly by the University of Minnesota. We have a number of those classes. We also have a CIS ASL class through Mankato. Century College has been a strong partner of ours and we really continue to explore more ways we can offer credits through them. And this year, for the first time, we're really seriously in conversations with St. Paul College about ways that we could partner and offer opportunities through them for credit. And just a visual reminder again that we have four career pathways that have been identified in strategic design with our community, with our industry partners and parents. There are more than just these four career pathways, there are lots of career opportunities through our coursework such as teaching, which we'll hear about tonight. But these have been given a lot of attention as we've developed these course sequences and we've brought on staff to support them. You'll hear more from us in the spring. We've requested to be on an agenda item later the school year where we can share more about and highlight more of the things that have happened this school year and that will be happening in the summer. So, I hope we'll look forward to the opportunity to share more as well. Other things we think about when we are designing courses are things like student interest and enrollment trends, and then the school's capacity to implement these courses. So, I just see if Mr. Bosch would like to speak to those things as a principle he needs to take into consideration.
I think it's always imperative that when we're talking to students and when we're looking at new courses to propose to the board and to our students, that we take into consideration the staffing that goes along with that, also the scheduling of the facilities. With our current six-period day schedule for our North and South Campus, especially at the North Campus, with our ninth and tenth graders, they're kind of locked in in a lot of ways with their schedule and their opportunities to take elective courses, we're going to kind of explore is somewhat limited with the current six-period day schedule. So, that's important as we look into providing new courses for students for that exploration pathway. It kind of lightens a little bit as they get to South Campus, they have more opportunity to tend to have adjustments in their schedules to explore certain courses. So, all of those are taken into consideration when we look at the course proposals. Staffing also is very important, especially when we get into our informational technology as an example, trying to find staff members that have the skill base to teach those courses is also very important too. So, we have to look at that and take that into consideration as well too. And facilities as well too. I think we've been very fortunate to have the facilities and the space available for a lot of our pathways, but that's also, that's something we always take into consideration as we build our pathways.
All right, any questions so far? And for staffing, one piece to think about is a lot with the proposals for next year, you'll see pending or pursuing concurrent enrollment opportunities. That's because it takes quite a bit of conversation and some negotiation with the post-secondary institutions regarding the credentials that they expect for our teachers in order to teach the classes for credits. So, we start gathering transcripts, we share those with their departments, they decide if they meet the requirements or if they might need a professional development plan. So, that work takes a bit of a process on both of our ends. So, we're designing around hopefully to use the staff that we have, some of those opportunities, we just need to make sure that they have the qualifications to do so. So, looking back to last year, you approved a number of new courses and the first of which, for the middle school, was Avid Six Connect, which extended our Avid offerings now to grade six all the way up to grade twelve. In the after-action report, you can see some information on the enrollment. I'll go through these a little bit quickly, but I'd be happy to stop and answer any of your questions as you would like. So, any questions on the Avid Six Connect? I have had a chance to visit each of these classes and we really, you know, in terms of thinking of the staff we have in place, we have excellent teachers who are really engaging these kids and you can tell it's a highlight of their day. So, it's really exciting to offer kids that experience right away in middle school.
Yeah, it's kind of what the student perception to that is?
They, the feeling is, you know, a sense of pride from what I can tell, that they, you know, feel a part of something and very connected to that teacher and to that classroom, which is huge for us with our sixth graders. And then, the rest are high school. We added two AP courses this year, environmental sciences, which was exciting because it's our one AP science class that does not have a math prerequisite. So, our chemistry, because it requires students to be on a really rigorous math track, isn't open to everyone, for example. But AP environmental sciences is one that a lot of students can take. AP computer science principles was a key course for our IT pathway and similarly has just a grade level math prerequisite. And then, we had programming fundamentals, which is in partnership with Century College and students are taking that intro-level computer science class at both campuses, North and South. We have a CIS exploring teaching class aimed again at recruiting and hopefully creating a pipeline of some strong students in our district to maybe even enter the teaching profession here. And then, the social justice change and responsibility class, we're very excited about the design of it and that was one offered at North Campus as an elective. And unfortunately, we didn't have enough students to run that. And that is something, as Don alluded to, is a challenge and we do anticipate it with some of our new offerings. We want students in grades nine and ten to have these opportunities, but they don't always fit with their schedules if they're music students, if they're world language students, et cetera.
Mr. Chapman?
Two questions. First off, going back to the first several here, I noticed that we're, we didn't meet our targets on students of color as far as enrollment. Have you gotten any feedback from the liaisons, cultural liaisons and others as to why we are falling short on meeting, coming close even to meeting those targets?
That's a great question. For these specific classes, I have not heard in particular from the liaisons, but we have a lot of strategies that we want to address between now and registration time and hearing from the students, I think will be key. A year ago, we, we started a relationship with an organization called Equal Opportunity Schools and they provided some really strong support for us as we could analyze our current status and set some targets and also administer surveys to identify students for these courses. Last year, we weren't in partnership with them and we feel like we really need their support again. So, we're working to continue our work with them and I think they will be key for us to work toward meeting these goals. But, I appreciate the question. I didn't reference the individual statistics here, but I did want to share them and we're happy to talk about our areas to grow because we think that's so central to accomplishing our district's mission.
And follow up to that, do the cultural liaisons, I mean, to your knowledge, do they promote these classes to their various constituencies?
I'm going to pass this over to Ms. Paul.
Two-part answer to that. First, we're at a new place in terms of defining their roles and they will be a critical part to this work this year. I think last year, we had several students that didn't feel ready yet to take on a college level course and it's part of their design, they made a two-year plan and designed to take a college level course in the next year. So, we're going to see those numbers bump up just by, we want to make sure every student feels confident that they're taking a class that they're going to be successful in. We also had a significant increase in the number of overall students accessing rigorous courses and so that impacts the balance in terms of the mirroring the demographics of the district. So, that's another factor that's part of some great work we were doing. But, we definitely, that, this is actually the why behind the need for us adding cultural liaisons so that we have more of those thoughtful conversations and personalized conversations with students.
You don't, Spady, you had a question?
Oh, no, I just had a comment about the social justice change and responsibility class. Even though it didn't go ahead, we had two teachers at North Campus, Tiffany Dietrich and Kathy Olson, who had started a Justice League after school for those kids that were disappointed that the class didn't go ahead. They're planning their first event, I think in November. And if you contact Tiffany, she had, they have their mission and goals, they have a youth executive board that's running it, they have their focused areas. They're using teaching tolerance materials. So, even though that class didn't proceed, they've still provided opportunity for students that were interested in taking that class. So, kudos to them.
Thank you for highlighting that, exactly. I just want to make sure to mention that Don Bosch has played a critical role in even bringing that model to South Campus. So, what he did, his work with teachers at North Campus, it's actually getting replicated over at South Campus and so we're excited to see, see how that opportunity plays out at South Campus as well.
Mr. Chapman?
I mean, we're not pulling it at this point.
Right. Right, we'll continue, we'll put it out there again. They, she had a nice effort, including a video to get the word out, but I think, you know, we'll look to see what more we can do this year. And it wasn't, it was good, I think our numbers started out like twenty-two had signed up for it, so we just would need to bump it up a little bit to be able to offer that.
Do we have a number that must sign up? Because I noticed before there was a class running at North that had twelve in it, but do we have a, what's our limit there in terms of running a class?
Good question. The actual, to go back to social justice change and responsibility course, when we looked at enrollment numbers last year for this coming school year, we had sixteen students who had signed up for it. So, in looking at all of our courses, the decision was made not to move forward with that course. And so, yes, I'm glad you mentioned the Justice League because I had conversations both with Tiffany and Kathy at the end of the year last year and that was something that they thought they would move forward with, knowing that the course wasn't going to move forward. In response to the other question regards to the course that had twelve, I'm assuming you're referring to the IT exploration course? When we ran that course, actually there was twenty, twenty-three students who had registered for that course. So, between the end of registration and the start of the school year, obviously we lost some students. And we're looking into the, to the why, as far as why those students changed their mind or if they left the district or if it was a combination of both. So, so, the cutoff is, it's kind of hard for me to give you a finite answer as far as like we look, I think somewhere around, you know, the mid twenties is kind of what we're looking at as far as whether or not we're going to be able to run that course. Then also it goes back to making sure that we have staffing in place as well, making sure we have room in our schedule as well and also making sure that we have room for that course as well too. So, those are all taken into consideration.
Okay. Any other questions for the after-action report? All right. So, moving into the proposals for next year, we have kind of four buckets of proposals. You'll see some that are new courses and then some things that are changes, whether that's a grade change, a name change of the course, realignment, which might also include prerequisite change and/or opportunity for concurrent enrollment through a post-secondary institution. Our process for this is lengthy, so while it takes two board meetings to typically get action on these items, it's really half the year or more around this process. So, in February through March, I share with curriculum leaders and then they bring to their departments the information about what they need to do if they are to generate their own course proposal. Then during that time, they, as well as other teaching and learning staff, other leaders in the district, are analyzing what we currently have, looking to explain our opportunities, develop the proposals, work with those other institutions and getting support. So, if a teacher presents an idea, they would need to get support from their department, have their curriculum leader sign off on it, obtain support from their administrative liaison, the principal, and then bring that to me. And so, that happens in the spring. And then, over the summer into the fall, we're reviewing and finalizing those proposals, presenting them to the teaching and learning team, discussing with principals' meetings, bringing them to the cabinet level and engaging in those conversations with the coordinators at our post-secondary partners. October is where we come here and present this first brush at the proposals and share that after-action report and then see if there's anything we need to get more information or consider. And then, we ideally come back and present at the November school board meeting for action on these courses so that they can be finalized and the registration guides can be edited in December for when they're printed and then placed online and then the students register in January. Students, you probably had no idea how this went into it, did you? So, for this year, we have a number of new course proposals and I will start with unified PE. So, this was presented by a teacher at North Campus who had heard about this really unique and wonderful opportunity that is sponsored through Special Olympics. And what people really seem to be excited about is this opportunity for kids that maybe in the mainstream PE is not their favorite class and they don't either find a lot of success or find it as stimulating as we'd like them to and are students who typically might not have the opportunity to take a PE class with their mainstream peers. So, it's a really neat opportunity for students to be integrated and allow for success and meaningful relationships across the school. meaningful relationships across the school. Are there any questions you have about Unified PE?
Mr. Kimball?
Yeah. I saw that it looked like first glance was, oh, it's like the opposite of mainstreaming, but doesn't seem like that's the purpose. It seems like it's intended to have non, students without disabilities in there also. And is it just totally in elective, or is there some amount of, like, trying to recruit potential leaders? Because it sounds like they're trying, part of the goal is provide an environment for students to find leadership in this particular way.
We, so, you're right, it's an integrated course, and Kathleen, if you want to jump in, feel free, because she's been in these conversations, too. The students with IEPs who'd be in this would traditionally be in a DAP class where they wouldn't be with their mainstream peers, so this opens up the opportunities. We have a lot of students interested and excited about opportunities to work with their peers with IEPs, whether they're doing it through a buddies program or through their service projects that they're doing. So, in sharing this, talking to some students about it, there was high interest. I don't know if it was just the special pocket of students. But in terms of a plan to publicize the class, I think using some of our leadership groups would be a great place to start.
Which have been really popular and have been growing, and so, I think because we have such good turnout for those teams, it's kind of an extension of that into.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Then I will move on to the next proposal, which is a Heritage Spanish class, and this was proposed by a team of both Spanish world language teachers and our EL department, looking at the fact that we have students with near-native or native proficiency in Spanish who are not accessing opportunities to improve or maintain that Spanish. So, we anticipate we may have about 20 or so students that this would be appropriate for, so this is likely something we couldn't offer every year, but would, again, be really intentional about seeking out the right students to offer this opportunity for. They would have that opportunity to speak, read, write, develop, you know, they usually have pretty good oral proficiency, but continue to have those full classes that are conducted in Spanish. And this is one where we're looking at concurrent enrollment opportunities, whether it would be through Century College or through, the Minnesota Department of Education has something called a Bilinguality Seal, where students would take an exam at the end, and if they demonstrate a certain level of proficiency, they would be granted credits within the Minskew system. So, a great opportunity for those students as well. Any questions on this one?
Mr. Wilson?
Is there any attempt to stimulate cross-cultural learning with the students enrolled in Heritage Spanish?
There certainly would be within the class, but that's a really great question that I could bring to them as they're developing the curriculum.
In foreign countries.
Yeah. They could definitely do some education with their peers in the Spanish for non-native speakers classes, too. They would be a really great resource. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. And then we move on to AP Psychology. This, again, is seen as an AP class that's a really wonderful entry point for students. It has one of the highest pass rates of all the AP courses. We had teachers really involved in hearing from students about this one, about what grade they would consider taking it, about whether they'd take it as a semester or a year-long course. And they were really mindful of wanting to create this as an opportunity that might be that first AP course that would launch them into future AP classes. So, are really designing this for the success of the students. With that in mind, we're offering it for grade, we would offer it for grades 10 through 12. There is some mature content in a psychology class. Some of you may remember some of that from your college days, so just wanting to ensure that it's the appropriate level, level of maturity of the student matches the course content. And this one, well, when you take an AP class, then you have that chance to take the exam at the end of the year for credit. What some schools are doing and finding success in is what we would like to explore with this one, which would be partnering with Century College, for example, where they would sign off on it as a concurrent enrollment opportunity. So, even if the kids didn't take the test, they could be eligible for those college credits. So, that would be a win-win if we would be able to offer it as both.
Mr. Kimball?
Yep. Just to clarify on that last point, so it would basically be like an AP slash CIS?
Right.
Do we have other courses like that that are both?
We don't, but we're interested in exploring other opportunities. And we wouldn't label it CIS because this wouldn't be through the University of Minnesota, which kind of owns that moniker. But, yes, we'd look at other opportunities if this model seems like it's working.
And do we have, like, so at North Campus, or would the 10th graders go over to South to take it, or would it be at North and South?
We'll have to wait to see what the enrollment would dictate. So, if there's enough, if there are enough 10th grade students, we would be excited to have the section at North Campus. If not, then they can do some creative scheduling, if you want to speak to that.
We've done some of that in the past, too, where we have some North Campus students who come to South Campus and take certain courses. Psychology, right now, at North Campus is a very popular elective course, especially for our sophomores. And so, in speaking with some of those students last year and some of our upperclassmen this year, we're excited about having an opportunity for another Advanced Placement course because in 9th and 10th grade, that's kind of limited. In 9th grade, they have AP Human Geography, and 10th grade, currently, we have AP US History. So, to provide another opportunity for students for possible college credits is pretty exciting to them. And as Jill mentioned, it's also a great kind of on-ramp as we work on narrowing the opportunity gap with our students. This is a great, great fit for some of those students.
South Campus Principal, you seem to know a lot about North. Another question. The, when it says that AP Psychology continues to have one of the highest pass rates of all AP courses, what does that mean?
So, that would be earning, you can earn a zero to five, a three, four, or five.
Take the test.
Correct.
But, that's optional.
Right. Right. And we tried to dig into the research even a little bit more on this to see, you know, what happens than if students don't pass. And the AP conducted its own research, but it was a really large-scale survey, and what they found out, or mining of data around the US, is that with these classes that 10th graders take, even if they don't get a three, if they get a one or a two, they're more likely to take AP in the future than a student who didn't take an AP class. So, not passing the test doesn't deter them from those opportunities in the future. So, I think that's a concern teachers have, is they want kids to be successful, so if they take it and don't do well, you know, could that alter their course? And what it looks like is no, in fact, they may be more likely to take one in the future.
So, do we have any other, it was interesting that 9th graders aren't mature enough, it was decided to take this. Do we have other classes like that? Or, it seems a little different. And, I mean, some 9th graders, obviously, are more mature than some 10th graders.
I'm not aware. Could you think of any? I mean, we have some that just are offered to different grades, I mean, like in a sequence, but.
George, is your question, other courses that are, do we have?
President for, you know, like, at North Campus, here's a class that's an elective, but you have to be 10th grade, you can't be a 9th grader to take it. Is that what we're saying here with this one?
Yeah, we have courses that are aligned to, like, 10 and 12, so we have other courses that are aligned to that. Do we have courses that are just typically 9, 10? There are some that are offered at North that are typically not offered at South Campus. Nothing in the Advanced Placement area at all, other than Human Geography.
I would say this is a really good example of trying to honor perspectives that were brought forward, and one perspective being this should only be 11, 12, and really coming to a place that we really felt that this should be an opportunity, for all the reasons Don shared earlier, be a course that North students could access. But we're just trying to really honor and balance all the perspective brought and make the best decision, and we landed on 10 through 12 being the right place to start for this class. There's a unit that has some content that we just want to make sure we're honoring the perspective of appropriateness, and we'll be monitoring that, of course, but I think that there was some very intentionality by landing on 10, 12.
Another concurrent enrollment opportunity is the expansion of that CIS through the University of Minnesota course on Exploring Teaching. So, you saw in the after-action review that this is the first year that we are offering that through our Family and Consumer Sciences Department. We have two sections of students enrolled in that this year, and the U has a second semester option for students. So, we do have a number of students taking it this year who are 11th graders, so they would be eligible to take it next year, as would anyone who signs up and would be able to take it in the fall. So, we think that we would have a good chance at getting a full section of this second semester piece of Exploring the Teaching Profession. Any questions on this one? Then we have Orientation to Interpreting, and this was, this was suggested to us, actually, by Century College, so it's really neat to see how course proposals come out. A number of them come from teachers, some of them come through our partnership opportunities, and this one was one where their new Director of Partnerships after learning about our pathways suggested, in hearing that we have a number of bilingual students, that interpreting, translation is a really great, you know, credential and opportunity for students, especially in healthcare, but in really any of the pathway areas that we're looking at. And we have an instructor who's really excited about it. He's thought about this for years, and he said he just hadn't found the right college who was willing to talk more about it. So, this would be a really great opportunity. It would be a cross-cultural experience for students because we have students who could speak Hmong, could speak Spanish, Somali, or be advanced proficient in a world language that they've been studying, and would be all in this class to learn about interpreting as a career. Questions on this one? And then our last new course would be a Certified Nursing Assistant course. That would be a semester offered at South Campus. There is a prerequisite for these CNA programs that students are 16 or older. We'd be looking at this for a concurrent enrollment opportunity, and Jenny Moore comes to us from working in the post-secondary and higher ed in Montana, where she was directly involved in working with healthcare career pathways in that realm. So, she's been a key leader on this, and I'd just like to turn it over to her to say a little bit more about this opportunity.
Thanks, Jill. I am, I get really excited about possibly offering this course at Wiber Lake School District, and so, with that, CNA is Certified Nursing Assistant is the first logical step in a healthcare career pathway. We have heard other viewpoints, you know, there's EMT and there's phlebotomy. However, those specific career pathways or certifications, you have to be 18 years old. So, Certified Nursing Assistant is the only actual industry-recognized credential that you could get as a healthcare career student at 16 years old or older. And so, what's really cool about being CNA certified on top of that is that you can, it's a stackable credential in that. A student could become CNA certified at 16, and they could leave by 18 with a home and health aid certification, they could focus on dementia care, they could focus on geriatric specialties, and there's a variety of additional certifications that students could get when they, if they're employed. Additionally, we have healthcare employers lining up, literally emailing me almost every other day, wanting to be a part of a healthcare career pathway, and so we have a lot of interested employers with regards to opening up their clinic, or opening up their facility to help us see this through. And a couple other things. Don and I are working with Wiber Lake Chamber of Commerce, the Business Education Network for Health and Human Services. It's a brand-new project starting this year. And they, the Wiber Lake Chamber of Commerce is specifically focusing on working with healthcare employers, so we have additionally, we have people who are interested locally that want to work with us. And other positives to thinking about this program, long-term care facilities and other facilities are actually required by law to reimburse an employee for their CNA training costs, which I think is really interesting. If you read the fine print, they are required to do that. And so, if students actually go through this and they have to pay for whatever expenses that pay for, there is an opportunity for our students to get reimbursed if they have to pay out of pocket, so that's a huge plus for us. And I just wanted to say one thing, this, I did see it being successful. I worked with seven school districts in the Missoula, Western Montana area, and from December 2015 to June 2017, so what, 16 months, we had 54 students successfully complete, become CNA certified. And in a small valley with only 50,000 people, that's a huge gap that we were able to provide for our, the local community, and then those students were able to see whether or not healthcare or nursing was really that route for them. And it really helps them see the different parts of the healthcare field as well. So, it's, I don't know, I get really excited about it, and I think there are challenges, money, equipment, facility, but I think that with the support that we have with the community, we could easily overcome those barriers.
Thank you. Yeah, Tony.
So, I'll say that. This past summer, I had the opportunity with Jill and with Wayne to visit the students that went through the region's career pathway down there, and I think this is great. I'm looking forward to us doing it. There were several of those students that, at the end of it, they, some of them weren't for sure that they were looking at the healthcare industry, and then they were for sure after they got through that course, and so I think this aligns with it. Very pleased to see it, so thank you.
Yeah. I get, and, I'm sorry, I just want to say one more thing, too, that students can really see if they could be assistant living, it can be long-term care facilities, it can also be hospitals. So, Kathy Barr, the president of Health East in the East Region, they are currently hiring CNAs as well, and so they can, there's a lot of different levels of work that they could start with. It may not be the living wage that they want, but it's a starting point for them. And finally, and I promise finally, for those students who are interested in nursing programs, not all universities actually require a CNA certification. However, when they do a nursing interview to get into their nursing programs or another allied health program, they do get extra points for that, and most universities, like Bethel University, they still do require a CNA certification. So, it's, it's, once again, providing them that step up to pursue a healthcare career.
I think she answered all your questions, didn't she? Okay. Thank you. So, that concludes the section of the new course proposals, but you'll still see that there are new opportunities coming with just realigning classes we already have.
Mr. Kimball? Mr. Chapman, excuse me.
I thought you were yelling. No. In terms of these new courses, it sounds like certainly we do some informal test runs or send out balloons with students and so forth to see what kind of interest there would be. Do we do anything beyond that on, in a more structured way, such as serving students, as to the types of, you know, if we have ideas like this, sending these ideas out and just seeing what kind of, what kind of reaction there is, and interest and demand there may be?
Yeah, the Social Studies Department was a great example of doing that with AP Psychology. So, they administered through their, I think it was their 9th grade psychology class's survey, so they could capture a wide net of interest. So, when there's a department that sends it out, they do, I think, a really nice job of capturing student voice and perspective, and often, when- of capturing student voice and perspective, and often, when it comes to name changes, they'll have conversations, too, to, they might not be getting the enrollment that they would like for a class. This came up last year with a, with an elective, and the teachers were, was asking the kids, you know, why, why didn't you sign up for this, or why did you? And there was just misconception of what the title meant. It was clear as day to the adults presenting. So, yes, I think we do it, and we're always looking for ways to continue to do it. We've brought proposals forward to the Superintendent's Advisory Council in the past and gotten really good feedback from them, so I'd look forward to that opportunity, too.
Mr. Wilson. Way back on your college participation slide, I noticed that PSEO was not listed, and just like you to confirm that that program...
That is, yes. I was focusing on what we offer with, in our campuses, but you're absolutely right, that that is an option.
I don't want to make it work for you or Sarah, but we've often been presented with aggregate numbers regarding the value of college credit earned and the number of courses participated in. Could we do that for the number of students that participate in college credit granting coursework? But if it's a lot of work, don't do it. You know, you've got a lot better things to do than...
Well, Dr. Kazmercheck collected that information. Right. Right. That was part of the annual report this last year that Dr. Kazmercheck provided.
Tuition rate, the number of credits taken, was not, just applying the credit rate towards...
We'll continue to capture that, because I think that is really meaningful to the community to see. So in the area of course changes, there are a number of them that relate to the career pathways. So again, we're trying to look at what we already have, being mindful of the staff that we have in place, and the grades that we're exposing students to these, so we can really build a pathway opportunity. So, we're proposing two changes that would really kind of formalize the construction pathway at North and South Campus. ALC has been doing some wonderful things with the construction pathway over the last couple of years. We've had high participation in that Minnesota Trades Academy, but we know that we've needed to develop that coursework at North and South Campus to get kids really into those opportunities there as well. So, looking at our Woods programming, we've, the last couple of years, only been offering it at North Campus, but we've had strong interest in that Woods 1 class, where we've had, like this year, three sections. Woods 2, we have one section currently. Students leave middle school, many of them with a really great experience in our tech ed department. Many students choose manufacturing education in 8th grade, love it, and they want another hands-on experience in high school. So a lot of those kids go on to choose Woods 1. We believe we can keep those kids and maybe even attract more by realigning that class to be not only woodworking, but an introduction to the construction industry. And that would be a class that we are exploring concurrent enrollment opportunities with either St. Paul College or Dunwoody, and students would get the hands-on piece through the woods, but then see more of what the trades have to offer. And we have a wonderful partnership and opportunity to use the Multi-Craft Core Curriculum, that's also known as MC3, and Jeremy has attended training. We have other teachers who are trained in that as well. So this would be a wonderful way to bring some of those modules into that course as well. And then moving on to a next class in that sequence would be the second of that series, where it would be moving on to Blueprint Reading, Carpentry, and Hand Tools. So again, getting the concurrent enrollment opportunity, as well as, you know, not only hands-on, enjoyable experience with woods, but connecting them to career opportunities. Are there questions about either of those two?
I took Woods 1 freshman year, and unfortunately, I couldn't take it now with South because it wasn't offered, so I liked the idea of bringing it up to South. And if you took Woods 1, can you go straight into construction blueprint reading, or do you have to re-take it, give it to a different class?
Nope. So you would, I think we would consider that meeting the prerequisite, we just want some experience with the equipment. So thank you for sharing your perspective. Any other questions or comments on those two?
Well, I'll just say that... For me, you know where I stand on construction. I'm all on board, I think this is great. I'm looking forward to the classes, and looking forward to expanding them and figuring out ways to do field trips to different places and do other things. I think it's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeremy is really excited, too. He is, these two, you don't have to give them much direction, they are off and running, and have met with 10 partners in between the times that we meet. So, there's a lot of interest in the construction world, and just want to share a highlight...
A couple of things, one of my former neighbors, well, he only lives nine miles away from me now, he was the Construction Superintendent for the U.S. Bank Stadium and for Morton's, and Dave Mansell. And then, last week, we just, well, I had the opportunity to go out and meet with representatives from Carl Sanderson, and one of their, Tony is a Mariner grad, so he was excited to work with us, and as was their leadership team. And then, I always mix up the word, it's McGough, and, and they are, also have sort of steered us in the direction of MC3. Being in a position of being a consumer during construction projects, I've been, I've had the opportunity to go through three of them, and referendums, and on college campuses, and et cetera. This is very, kind of a passion of mine as well, providing this opportunity for these careers, for these students.
And then, in this section, we have a couple of courses where the teachers are proposing name changes. One is at the middle school level. In 8th grade, students can take, can choose from several design class opportunities, and the name that is currently being used is Visual Media Design. And the kids who are taking it are saying, they're really surprised that it's, there's so much art in it, and are really loving that, and thinking that they could actually get more of their peers to take it if they understood that it had more of the art foundations in it as well. And then the CIS, Exploring Teaching, would be required if you approve the Exploring the Teaching Profession 2 class, so it would be labeled as a 1 and 2, to make that clear to students. Questions on either of those? Pretty straightforward. And then some other alignment pieces. The art teachers at the high school are proposing changes for Drawing and Painting 2 and Sculpture. Currently, students don't need to take the first level of those classes to take 2, it's just two different semesters of Drawing and Painting or Sculpture. And they've worked really hard to align their curriculum to standards, to develop students' skills, and have said, you know, it's getting challenging to kind of offer similar content to some students who've taken the first section and many students who haven't. And so they feel like they could offer a more rigorous art program that would better prepare students for future opportunities if they made those two classes prerequisite-dependent. And then, for Accounting 2, this has been offered the last couple of years as a full-year course, and that takes up a lot of students, a lot of space in their schedules, so it has not run for, I think, the last couple of years. So that department is suggesting that it be moved to a semester course, and they think they would get higher interest to be able to offer that. And then we're looking at a grade change for the Small Engines and Transportation Systems class, which is currently offered at North Campus. And the reason to move it to South Campus is just feeling some constraints with the facilities needed to run both the motors and with the ventilation and welding for that class at North Campus, in addition to the manufacturing in Woods, where they have fewer constraints at South Campus in that area. So, that is a proposal to move that up, and they think the same students who would take it at North Campus would likely just wait and take that at South Campus. And two other opportunities for existing classes that we are just exploring concurrent enrollment, so the instructors are gathering their transcripts and credential materials to see if this is a viable option, and that would be Wind Ensemble, to get Performing Arts Music Credit for the students who are in that Advanced Music offering, and Multi-Variable Calculus and AP. So you remember when we proposed this, maybe if you were around a few years ago, that we have the section of students who are really accelerated, they've already taken Calc AB, AP, AB and BC, and so they have the opportunity for the AP college credits through stats, but the level of calculus is a very advanced college-level calculus. So, it, it's really just trying to get them the credits for the content that is already at that level. All right. And that, that concludes our presentation. Any other questions?
Before I open it up, I just want to thank you all for your work. I mean, this is great stuff. I'm really excited about the new courses, the new course changes, everything. I mean, you know, really just brings in the whole college and career readiness, and one of the things I talk about all the time is, you know, I want all of our students to go to college or have those, have those opportunities, but at one point, they've all got to pick a career, and this is, this really just brings that to front. So, thank you all very much for your work. This is excellent stuff. Opening up to questions? Comments? Concerns? All right. Thank you all very much. With that, that is the last item that we have on the board, is, Dr. Kazmercheck, is there anything else that you have?
Good.
So, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
And we are adjourned.